For gathering things here. Were there any other recommendations that came in? Are people that were interested?
Well, this particular board, though, the law says that the mayor gets to choose. It's actually seven on this board. But it says the mayor chooses five according to that law. Yes, sir.
The Airport Commission recommended definitely.
That's what I was wondering. I was just wondering what the criteria was. I knew I was told that there was one. And I'm just curious.
And kind of like we discussed, the housing authority said they nominated this person. Water and Sewer Commission, there is a law that says they get to nominate somebody. But that's why it comes before the council.
But is it the mayor's choice that which one gets put before us?
Yes.
Okay. So now, was I'm trying to...
This is typical. And then we're part of three fours.
Three fours move.
I was trying to think, the commissioner has to get all the years back because he didn't live in the city. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, it was because he was an elected official.
Elected official. Okay, okay. I was thinking of the...
That's the term of county level.
Because that's what I wondered about the one that's here. I thought it says Holmgren and Bryan, they're working in Arkadelphia. But then it says residents and... Oh, look at it. I'm trying to think, well... You sure you'll get your right? Couldn't find somebody in Camden. Sir? Couldn't find somebody that's an actual Camden resident?
He lives here now.
It says he lives in Bryan.
His pilot's license has listed in form down. The people aren't that way.
Yeah, I know. But this says he lives in Bryan. Oh, for Ted Holmgren.
Page one says that the address... Okay.
Yeah, Bryan, Arkansas.
Well, I'm looking at one that says page one here.
That's his pilot's license.
Yeah. And what year was the pilot's license issued? Seventy-seven? So he hadn't lived in Camden in thirty years?
I can't say he hadn't lived in thirty years. I can say that his pilot's license in seventy-seven had been nine, ten, four, lookout, manor, which is what that says.
Seventy-seven was quite a long ago. Couldn't find a Camden resident?
Oh, I'm sure I can find a Camden resident, sir.
I asked about the Airport Commission once here, remember, a long time ago? And they like to have people there that have a license, that has a pilot license, that use the airport itself as flying. I don't know all about this young man, but I know he flies on a consistent basis. And so, I mean, that's when I read it, I kind of gave him my approval because that was the main thing that was explained to me about that. Remember, I always talked about the airport because I said that's one of the untapped revenues that we don't mess with around here. And in the business I've been in, with the companies I've been with, that's their number-one problem with Camden. I can't fly in there and I can't fly out of there. I lose a lot of time. I used to go pick up a guy in Little Rock all the time when I was working for the National Paper. And he just hated coming down here because he didn't have access. So I've always been one to want to be able to open that airport up, upgrade it, do whatever we got to do.
All right.
Excuse me, mayor. His license was reviewed March nineteenth, I mean, March of 2019. So it's last March. It's been almost a year since review. He was in Camden, living in Camden.
Are you required?
A year.
Well, so there's no requirement that they're supposed to live in Camden? Is that right?
I don't know. We had that raised for the Airport Commission.
I know it did come up on some commissions.
Yes.
On the Airport Commission.
All right. Is there any more discussion? Ready for votes, both those in favor, you go sign an aye. Most opposed, you sign a nay. Ayes have. We're ready now for Resolution Number 720 to approve. Seven twenty, which is introduced by the mayor.
Resolution seven twenty, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Camden, Arkansas, confirming the appointment of Kimberly J. Moore as an ex-officio member of the Airport Board of Commissioners.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved and second, I'm ready for discussion.
Is this relative of yours, Mr. Moore?
Sir?
Is this a relative of yours?
Yes.
Do you think it's appropriate that you be the one to introduce it? And you being a relative of yours?
You can entertain, but it's how you vote. I've abstained from a lot of voting up here, if you remember.
Wow, okay.
Mr. Attorney Frank? Is there a challenge at all? Are we good to keep going? I can keep going? Okay. Just a question, all right?
I've got a question. I don't see, I didn't see aviation background in this. I was curious of why that person is there against ex-officio spot? But I assume that's kind of your training to take the next opening or dumb stuff out. That's the way I would look at it anyway. And I was curious, knowing the gentleman that had been turned in from the Airport Commission that wasn't put up, that has a lot of aeronautical background in it, as I think there is on planes. He doesn't live in Camden either. But, I mean, he's here four or five days a week. Well, it was one of the things that I wondered about in looking at what they've turned in, but he wasn't mentioned. I'm just curious if there's some airport background in this appointment that I'm not aware of. Is there any?
May I speak?
Yeah.
When she talked to me about it, I... And if you read her resume, that should give you a hint of what type of person this is. The Airport Commission, everybody's out there, they're not going to fly planes. Remember, we're trying to open up the airport as a business. And if you read her licenses and everything, this lady's pretty business-minded.
That's business background.
Yeah, yeah. She started businesses. She's controlled businesses. She's been chief operating officers of businesses. So if we run the airport as a business, anybody can go out there and just fly. But we got to have a business to bring people here.
The whole criteria of the previous appointment was that he could fly. That's the whole criteria of appointing the guy that we just appointed.
And you said it correctly, the previous... And you said the previous appointment.
I'm just trying to understand the double standards that were apparently...
I don't think it's a double standard here. I don't think it's a double standard. It's the diversity that maybe you're not used to. We got to have diversity.
So now, let's get back to...
Careful now. That's going in an ugly direction.
Okay, so let's change that direction. Let's go a whole nother section. Is there any more discussion on Resolution Number seven twenty? In just a moment, we'll get to vote our voice. And that'll help us to be as loud as we need to be. So those in favor, you can vote in sign of aye. Those opposed, you can vote in sign of nay. Thank you. The ayes have it on that one.
No.
No, they don't? What happened?
We got three fours.
Simmons not here.
The council.
All right. All right, so that one does not pass.
Yes.
Well, let me just ask this. The gentleman that, I'm going to say, it was told to me that they turned it in to somebody up here at City Hall that is not through the Airport Commission. Was it Amen or someone else?
It was both offices.
Anyway, I mean, do we put that to hover for the next consideration? It might come up again. Or is it just get thrown in the shredder? Or what was it? I mean, you come over...
The mayor appoints...
The mayor makes the appointment. And so, if I were you, I'd probably speak with him if I had. But if someone's been talking to you and telling you what I need to do...
They told me Wednesday.
Let's do it later. But I'm not telling you who's telling you what I'm doing or not doing.
Now, they didn't tell... They said that someone from the Airport Commission had brought this gentleman up here, but they hadn't heard anything about it. And I said, "Well, I didn't even know it was coming up until I got my agenda on Thursday." So I said, "So let me just check on it and see." But I was going to say, I would like to think that if you're going to have people for consideration the next time it comes up, that is whatever he turned in will be in the file.
Still on the file.
Yeah, thank you so much for making that observation. We're ready for Resolution Number eight twenty, which is also introduced by me.
Resolution eight twenty, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Camden, Arkansas, approving the appointment of Mike Smith to the Water and Sewer Commission.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And property second, are we ready for discussion? Oh, well, voice vote. Those in favor, you can vote in sign of aye. Those opposed, you can vote in sign of nay.
Now, hard work.
That was...
Ordinance.
That was...
Listen to me. If you don't mind.
That's weird. I get a weird feeling.
No, sir.
There is no item number nine. So we needed to know that. All right, so now, ordinance number one twenty. Which of our own persons will introduce ordinance one twenty? All right.
Ordinance one twenty, an ordinance assessing a lien on certain property located at 379 Madison Avenue.
Make the motion to suspend the rules and put it up for third reading.
Second. It's been moved and second, I'm ready for discussion.
Yes.
Yes. Roll call. You ready? Want to say something?
No, sir.
Roll call.
Oh, sir.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Smith?
We're now...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved and second, I'm ready for discussion. I got one discussion.
Yes, sir.
I talked to Travis, a couple of these properties is in my ward. But in the past, you used to have two sheets. I know you contracted service out and got different contractors, but you would have breakdowns.
Cost you?
Yeah, why would we stop doing that?
Which is New Year, less paperwork. We'll start putting that in there for the future. We can, if y'all want to go on this, I can go pull the...
No, no, no. I would like, I know that we use different lawn services and stuff like that. If you could go back to doing that, I would appreciate it. I like looking at the breakdown.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's it. All right. Roll call. Is there any more discussion? Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
All right, we are ready now. Ordinance number two twenty, introduced by which all the person? Can we get a second?
Second. Not for me to go.
He wanted to introduce it. All right, ready. Motion to suspend the rules?
No, she just got to read.
Get out of here, don't you? Ordinance number two twenty, an ordinance assessing a lien on certain property located at 723 Lucas Lane. Now go.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and put it up for third reading.
Second.
I'm ready for discussion. Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second, I'm ready for discussion. Roll call.
Askew?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Ordinance number three twenty, which all the person will introduce it?
Ordinance three twenty, an ordinance assessing a lien on certain property located at 407 North Street.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and put it up for third reading.
Motion to suspend the rules. It's moved. Second.
Ms. Galbert.
All right, ready for discussion. Roll call.
Askew?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Ready for discussion. Roll call.
Galbert?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Smith?
We're ready now for ordinance number four twenty. Who will introduce?
I will.
Ordinance four twenty, an ordinance assessing a lien on certain property located at 426 Cleveland Avenue.
Make a motion to approve. Or make a motion to suspend the rules and put it up for third reading.
Motion to suspend the rules? It's the second? Ready for discussion. Roll call.
Argid?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Second.
It's moved and second, I'm ready for discussion. Roll call.
Moore?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
We have a door, it's now ordinance number five twenty. Which will introduce by which all the person?
I will.
Ordinance number five twenty, an ordinance assessing a lien on certain property located at 2133 Avon Street.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and put it up for a third reading.
It's moved. We need a second. It's moved and second, I'm ready for discussion. Um, I want to say something real quick. I mean, we moving through these pretty fast. And which is fine in there, the Avon Street, I think that's in your area.
Yes, sir. I went down and looked at it.
Yeah, but that's, I just want to make sure, hey?
I look at mine.
Problem in your area, go check it out.
I look at mine.
You know, just go right through this stuff, you know? I don't know if you looked at this properly, Elliot. Yeah, we just rolling there.
And I think before we go to turn down people's houses and put liens on people's property, we need to go look at it. I mean, that's why they put you up here? That's why they give you that little check? I mean, you got to do something for it. And I understand, but I felt like it was my responsibility.
And I agree.
Because that's my work.
I don't disagree. What I'm saying is, I rely on lots of traps. And there's a lot of work that goes into before it gets put down to this. There's a lot that's been going on.
I understand. But you might miss one, and I was...
I'm not playing by looking. It's always best to look.
But, you know, I know they holding me accountable. And I want to be accountable.
Yeah, like I said, the ones in my ward, I called Travis, I want to come and answer. Ask him about it. I want to know if the city cleaned it up or loan contractors or whatever. I mean, he do his job well, but you can check it out.
He's been doing it all in January. Spread this work out a little bit.
Is there any more discussion on 2133 Avon? Roll call.
This is for a suspension of the rule.
It's a big one.
Well, for a suspension.
Okay. Lindsey?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Motion to approve.
Second.
It's moved and second, now I'm ready for discussion. Roll call.
Moore?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes. Ready for ordinance number six twenty, which all person will introduce?
I will.
Ordinance six twenty, an ordinance assessing a lien on certain property located at 2361 Ferry Street.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and put it up for a third reading.
Second.
It's moved and second, I'm ready for discussion. Roll call.
Galbert?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and second, I'm ready for discussion. Roll call.
Argid?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
The all persons, ordinance number seven.
I will introduce it.
Ordinance seven twenty, an ordinance of the City of Camden, Arkansas, rezoning property located at 752 Skyline Drive from RS2 Single Family District to RM1 Multifamily District.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
I'm not going fast with this one. Somebody tells me a reason, I don't care.
Is there a motion on the floor?
To approve to...
Get discussion started.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Well, actually, it's a motion to suspend the rules.
Not on this.
All right.
Can I call Travis up? Because I didn't get a lot of...
I need a second.
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 Mr. Daniel?
I didn't get a lot of information on this one. And this one is in my ward, on Skyline Drive.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Can you tell me something about it?
Sure.
I know what I read, but...
Okay. The minutes of the planning commission's meeting were in your agenda?
I read that.
I don't understand your question, I'm sorry.
I guess when, well, what I'm reading here is telling me about changing it from a... It's a zoning change here from an RS2 to RM1.
Yes, sir. So the applicant wants to have a home occupation at that 752 Skyline address?
We talking about a beauty shop or...
Yes, sir, a home occupation, beauty shop.
I wasn't sure about it, but that's normally what it is.
Right.
Okay.
And so that zone does not allow home occupations? And so she had to upgrade her zone to RM1, which is the least restricted zone that allows that?
The multifamily?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I noticed that the commission is okay.
Yes, sir. Let it pass the unanimous. But since urgency, would you like to get on with it real quick? I don't know whether let them stew, see if there are any objections. Neighbors didn't say...
We had no objections.
There was no...
All of the immediate members.
Everybody said it's okay.
And what do you see in the opposition at the planning commission meeting?
If you don't want to, I'll go ahead and ask for a suspension of the ruling approved.
I'm good with it.
I think it'll be good. I read you off the report and this and that. If it was in my ward, I would went back.
Well, I worked for it. You know, I had to go out of town and my backpack, it was dark, and I didn't want to go through something dark.
I move on with that. So right now, we need to, we need to roll call on this.
Well, if no motion pending, someone's got to make a motion to suspend the rule.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so you get...
I'll second.
It's moved and second, I'm ready for discussion. Roll call.
Argid?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. It's moved and second, ready for discussion. Roll call.
Argid?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Galbert?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
The forward shift to eight twenty, I do want to mention again, if you have not written it down, it's explorecamden.com. And the planning commission is one of the only commissions where we do have all the attendance, minutes, maps, and zoning information on our website. So explorecamden.com has the planning commission's attendance, minutes, maps, and zoning information. If, we're ready now for ordinance number eight twenty, who will introduce it?
I'll introduce.
Ordinance number eight twenty, an ordinance permitting an elected official of the city of Camden to be interested in contracts with the city of Camden, Arkansas.
Make a motion to suspend, suspend the rules and put it up for a third reading.
Moved and properly second, I'm ready for discussion? Roll call.
Argad?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. And, uh, hold on.
No.
Someone on second?
Need a second.
Second.
That was the second. Alright, I'm ready for discussion.
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Well. I guess it's the same speech I gave about, about six M years ago. You know, it's, it's like everybody want to work for the city now. And, and, and I understand. What, what these are. What's the target about these, people do different things, people have different skills. I, I don't know, I, I've always, and, and I hope don't nobody take it wrong, but I've always put this right with nepotism, in a sense. If, if you don't want to do it, uh, you knew your job when you took it. Uh, that's just how it is, because it's easy to cross that line sometime. Because we, 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 when we get off into, when there is a check being written from the city. For me, and I'm, I'm doing work for the city. I, I just, you know, I don't want to give the impression that there is something wrong. So I'd rather not apply for anything from this city. That's why I never took money from this city in the nonprofit that we're in, they've asked us that we need funding, no. Because I don't, I don't want to even give that image that I might be profiting from anything, that I should be in a governing and body back. I think it has to exist in some occasions, because we have some people doing certain things that maybe don't nobody else do. But I think everybody have to govern themselves accordingly. That's all I got to say, said it six, seven years ago, a long time ago.
Is there any more discussion? Roll call.
Argad?
No.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
I think it is fair to say that we will go nine twenty.
Uh, it was pulled because that person has retired.
Nine twenty has been pulled because that person has retired. Who will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Ordinance ten twenty.
Ordinance number ten twenty, an ordinance permitting an official of the Camden Airport Commission to be interested in contracts with the city of Camden.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and put this up for a third reading.
Second. It's been moved and second, I'm ready for discussion. Roll call.
Argad?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Askew? Gilbert?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
I'm ready for discussion. Roll call.
Argad?
No.
Askew?
Yes.
Gilbert? Smith?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Pass it.
No.
He doesn't?
No.
He says no.
Say it again? I think that was forty-two, wasn't it? How many did you have?
Uh, yeah, Argad and, uh.
Was that on the suspension? Or was that on the motion? We already suspended rules.
We've already suspended rules.
Wasn't that passive?
Yeah, that's the passive.
What did you count?
What?
Forty-two.
I thought it was forty-two.
Argad and Gilbert both going to know.
Right, it's different. So that's forty-two.
But it's an airport commission.
But once the rules are suspended, it's the majority of the vote.
It doesn't matter?
No.
Okay.
It's the majority of who's left here.
Okay.
I think what she's telling me, and that's what Tier and I was telling, is a little different from that airport, that airport was three-fourths.
That, that was three-fourths.
Yeah.
Uh, well, it specifically said of the total commission, the, the, the rule suspension is of the total commission.
Okay.
So, so if we only have, uh, five people here, we cannot suspend the rules period, we won't ever have enough people. To suspend.
Right.
Even if they all go to.
In that case.
But, but once the rules get suspended, which all sits, then it's in the majority, then you just count it as normal.
Okay.
Right.
It is also fair to say that in ordinance thousand, that one is approved. Ten twenty is approved. It's also fair to say for ordinance eleven twenty, that since, and he's retired.
He's retired.
We can, the, eleven twenty has also been, uh, pulled.
It's pulled?
Yes, you know, on the works. Um, we're at an hour for other business.
I just got a couple of questions. A lot of people asking me about the streets. And, uh, I know we had a lot of rain, uh, I just need to know when or, what time we're going to start back, can you give me a little update if you don't mind, sir?
I sit in midday, judge, maggot, do like the class, uh, money. Uh, when it gets a little bit warmer, we do have a list of, uh, I think twelve streets that we'll start and go in order. I wrote with you with a couple more, ultimately, and y'all gave me, uh, gave Shamir the list on when y'all wanted to, first, second, third, and start that. Hopefully, when it's a little bit warmer the next month or so, we'll start those streets.
And, 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 Mr. Franklin, I kind of figured that what it was, but I don't want to cut any information out, as I got it approved.
Alright.
And, and, but I, I was sharing with my constituents that, I said, the weather's been bad, then the holidays came through. And I said, but I'm sure when everything clears up, you all going to get back to work on that, and, uh, I know the guys going to do a good job, I ain't worried about it.
Kevin? If you don't mind, before you sit down, one day, uh, uh, I was going to ask about street paving too, but. Down the street here on the corner of, uh, Madison and Wood. Straight down the street. This way.
Yeah.
Stop sign. Barely see it, it's faded out, is there any way we can get that changed, guy, get a brand new stop sign, uh, constituents in that area, they've been complaining about it since you was up.
Yes, sir.
At that time, but yeah, and, and I rode by there and looked at it, it is so faded, you know, it's a blessing, and, and it erects that, that intersection.
Madison Wood.
Right down the street, if you go toward Belton Church.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will you?
Sure.
Make a motion that's the, uh, mayor shorten the agenda for the next month.
That would be a disservice.
I wish, I don't even want to.
Hall of Vayner.
It's, uh, I mean, just, I, so I don't, I don't play poker, so you have to forgive me, uh, because I have a hard time, uh, I have a hard time taking. I, I think it's interesting that we have an opportunity in our city to start diversifying some of the boards and commissions. And I expect you, I mean, I know, I have, uh, views just like anybody else, and so I respect the fact that you get to vote, you get to do this. But I just don't think you should oppose only, uh, black and brown people, I think you should be just as fair in opposing any person. Who may or may not fit and ask all questions about all people. And tonight, it, it makes me feel awkward in twenty twenty, you know, I mean, if we were talking about a real issue of some sort, if, I would feel more comfortable, I just. I, I hope that we will try to diversify some of these boards and commissions, whether or not all men, or, 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 just that we would diversify and be more inclusive as much as we possibly can. And that's, that's my plea, as we go into twenty twenty, that some of the commissions and some of our organizations reflect our community. And you, you have, you have a right to vote, and I don't, I just wanted to be clear that my objective is to reflect the community in which we. And so I, I, I will continue to, uh, push for including women, and I will, and continue to push for including as much as people qualify. If they're black and brown, or if Smurfs or Martians move in, to make sure that our community is reflected in some of the decisions that we're making. I shudder to think that we're making some of these decisions where we're only asking questions about one group of people, and. So I don't know, i- i- I'm not saying that they're not legitimate questions, I'm just saying, I hope that we will all seek to diversify in these boards and commissions. That's my only request. Is there any other business before us tonight?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I think this, I may have to ask Michael, I got a call about a special call meeting where they passed the budget.
Okay.
And they were telling me that they had contacted the municipal league in Little Rock, and that you can't pass a s- budget on a special call meeting.
I would have to research that. They, they was notified, and I think the budget was on the agenda. So, and, and that may be the difference, a special call meeting would be. A, a special call meeting would be if you, if you didn't, weren't able to get it noticed to everybody.
I don't know, you want to check us, they said they called Little Rock and talked to them, and they said you can't do it.
I will, I will check on that, but, but I think the difference would be, well, like, if, if the council said we're going to meet next week, that, that's, if they're noticed, everybody, there's an agenda that's printed, and there's something on the agenda, that's not a special call meeting.
Okay, was that?
E- e- even though, well, we might, we might call it that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, really, I think, but the term special call meeting means.
The requirement, I thought, was the meeting.
The difference would be an emergency meeting versus a special call meeting.
Right, right, maybe that's a, I will certainly research.
You don't know what.
Be sure, I can, I can check on it.
Same person probably contacted LA, please.
Uh, okay, well, I hadn't heard that from you. So, so yeah, if somebody wants to, wants to send me something on beforehand, I'll certainly.
So we did pass the budget.
Yes.
During the call meeting.
Well, yeah, that's, yeah.
I wouldn't.
And I'm going to say, in my time here, I don't think that's the first time that that's happened, that we had a special meeting in December to pass the budget.
I remember one, remember we was about to run over past January.
Yes.
President Fetter, if not, it'll be back on the agenda for February.
And.
We don't know.
And I was going to ask, when we had those meetings, can, can we like make copies of the budget for the public, because a lot of people's asking me, they didn't know what was going on, they didn't know the raises that were being passed, they, they said none of that comes out, it's just done, and all of a sudden, everybody hears about it.
You guys think us to make ninety, um, ninety pages of copies?
I.
And what if we made it available?
That's what I'm.
If they call up here and ask, what we.
Well, I mean, a lot of people won't get here till late, and they want to know if there'd be some copies out there, they could pass them around, I guess, but they were just asking.
I have some elderly constituents, and they don't, they don't, you know, they don't have internet. And, and usually I'll, I'll, they'll call me, or they'll see me at church, and I try to explain it to them best I can. But I have, and, and I checked one time, and here, I have made a copy of that raise section and give it to them. Because they want to see that.
Is there any other business before the council?
Yes, sir. I have two things, uh, and one, I've got several complaints on Old Wire Road, apparently, it's, uh, with all the rain we've been having, it, it, it cools in the road, it's not draining properly. And it's, uh, got a lot of people upset, the hydro plane had an accident, uh, and the paint on the road is kind of hard to see, special.
On Old Wire?
Old Wire Road, it's, it's paint and, and water standing in the road. And number two, and I hope you'll indulge me on this, I feel like I'm being targeted this evening by both you and Mr. Moore. And you're inferring, if not outright accusing me of racism, I don't appreciate.
Oh, no, sir.
I am not.
You missed your meeting.
No, 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 sir, no, you have, it's my turn, I interrupted you when you're speaking, I appreciate the same respect. Uh, I am not, uh, my issue that I brought up was I didn't want an extra more on, uh, a thing, it's strictly, uh, I'm drawing a blank. A nepotism issue that I had an issue with, it has nothing to do with color of skin. And the pilot issue that I brought up is again, we're talking about somebody from Bryant, Arkansas, that man has a distinguished career in the military, I wouldn't impugn him for any reason, but he is not a resident of Camden. That's why I brought up the issue, and I do not appreciate you inferring any differently. Not stopping at that, thank you, sir.
Well, I, I would, I'm sorry if you thought that, I never inferred, my whole concern.
Yes, sir.
I spoke before about what I thought about and the opportunity we have with the airport. And, and I know that this young lady has the skill to bring that into a business entity for us. Everybody not going to be able to fly, that's what I was saying, and I was saying the diversity of it is what we need here in Camden. We need it everywhere, I'm sure the chief, the fire chief, all of them want diversity. And that's something we need at that airport out there, because, for some of the businesses, people that will be coming in here, those are the first people they see. Because they come in here to do business, they won't see all of Camden. But those are the first people, and I'm hoping they to give the best impression they can give. You know, I requested her that she came home to run our foundation down there, and that foundation has grown, expanded, she's our spokesperson. So I know the diversity that she brings to any business, she's got the skills, she's got the talent, and she got the love in her heart.